As the 2022 CPI was 6.5%, the 5% cap is used in tonight's levy. Tonight's levy is the same as the tentative levy presented at the November 6, 2022 meeting. It is materially consistent with revenue assumptions included in the legally adopted 2023-2024 operating budget. Tonight, administration is recommending an operating levy of $333,300,000, a 6.27% increase over the prior year extension. This increase represents the 5% increase tied to the Consumer Price Index, plus an additional 1.27% for new property. Once filed with the county clerks, the county will review the levy and adjust it based on the actual amount of new property in the district. As such, we will not receive the full amount levied this evening. The county clerk will also automatically apply a levy for payment of the district's outstanding bonds. This levy amount is estimated at $25,525,000, a decrease of 5.79% from the prior year. The total levy is $358,825,175, or a 5.31% increase from the prior year. In making the levy recommendation, administration performs a complete review of the current and future budgets and current operating reserves to ensure we are asking for revenues only to the extent necessary to fund district services. The district continues to see cost increases at or above the Consumer Price Index, which this levy is directly tied to. Specifically, costs associated with salaries, benefits, transportation, and many other consumables continue to increase. As required by state public acts, we have included tonight's materials to disclosures. These disclosures demonstrate that the financial reserves of the district are in line with what is needed to operate in the district, and we do not need to file a reduction plan with the state. The district had approximately $207 million of cash on hand at June 30 of 2023, the purpose of which was to provide liquidity and address current liabilities as of that date. The district has received estimated valuation information from both counties for both new and existing property. Based on this information, we believe tonight's levy will generate a tax rate below that of prior years. We estimate the total tax increase for a resident to be approximately 4.67%. For a home with a $415,000 fair market value, this would represent a tax increase of approximately $299. And with that, I'm available for any questions from the board, and I recommend the board adopt the 2023 levy later in this meeting.
So we had no public comment this evening, so I need a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to that the Board of Education close the public hearing.
Is there any discussion or question? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Ms. Gents?
Yes.
And Ms. Fostick?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, tonight we have four board salutes. Let's start with Ms. Fostick.
Matia Valley Physical Education Program receives state recognition. The board salutes the Matia Valley Physical Education Program on receiving the Physical Education Blue Ribbon Award from the Illinois Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. This award is in recognition of the outstanding learning opportunities and excellent instruction that is provided to Matia Valley students. Congratulations to all involved.
Ms. Jane?
District 204 students receive Kids Matter Youth Service Awards. The board salutes five District 204 high school students who received Youth Service Awards from the City of Naperville and Kids Matter. The Youth Service Award recognizes and honors outstanding volunteer efforts by local area students and encourages all youths to get involved in community service. The 2023 honorees nominated by community organizations are Matia Valley seniors Soloni and Shilbarik, Nikwa Valley senior Kendall Klemic, and Wobonzi Valley juniors Risha Bunzel and Akash Goli. Congratulations to all students who are honored with the notable award.
Ms. Gents?
Four District 204 parent teacher associations awarded grants. The board salutes four District 204 parent teacher associations for receiving grant awards from the National Parent Teacher Association to carry out programs in their schools and communities. Longwood and White Eagle Elementary PTAs received a PTA Connected Be Internet Awesome Grant, sponsored by Google and YouTube. Kendall Elementary PTA received a PTA Connected Ready Tech Go Grant, sponsored by AT&amp;T. And Fisher Middle School received a PTA Healthy Minds Grant, sponsored by the Allstate Foundation. Congratulations to all the parent teacher associations for their hard work, effort, and determination in securing these grant awards.
Mr. Rising?
Young Elementary School receives a $10,000 grant in recognition of an inspiring staff member. The board salutes Dr. Robert Bell and Nancy Young Elementary for receiving a $10,000 grant from Cheez-Its in recognition of Dr. Bell as being an influential educator and for the Doc Football Program he created at Young Elementary. Dr. Bell was nominated for the award by his former student Peyton Thorn, who said Dr. Bell made a difference in his life. Peyton is currently the quarterback at Auburn University and noted that Dr. Bell has inspired hundreds of young men and women, not only for his consistent, inspiring presence at Nancy Young Elementary, but also for the Doc Bell Football Program during recess. Congratulations, Dr. Bell.
So let's give an applause for all of those wonderful accomplishments. Next, we have our student representative report by Anna Bucknauer from Wobonzi Valley High School.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here again. My name's Anna Bucknauer, and I'm here today to represent Wobonzi Valley High School. As a Warrior, I am proud to report that our Wobonzi community continues to thrive and provide many outstanding experiences to our students. In regards to clubs and activities, clubs and activities are well into their season. We are particularly proud that our speech team is sitting at 55 competitors. Wobonzi has had a hard time fielding a speech team in the past, but this year we found the right way to attract students to this highly competitive, great experience builder. WV Chess and Scholastic Bowl are currently in first and second places within the WV DVC competition. Not to jinx their progress, but we look forward to some great postseason results along with speech from all of these teams. Currently rostered for all 64 clubs and activities in our school are 56% of our students. That's just above average to previous years. In terms of athletics, the Wobonzi Valley Winter Athletics Season is up and running, and the Warriors have had a great start to the season. Boys' basketball is off to a 6-0 start with a tournament championship at the Batavia Invite and a big conference win over Naperville Central last Friday. Girls' basketball is also off to a great start with a record of 7-1. This includes a York Thanksgiving Tournament Championship and a big conference win over Naperville Central last Friday as well. Wrestling is off to a great start with a number of individual accomplishments. The Warriors will host Matia Valley on Thursday, the 7th. Dance has competed in two events and have improved each competition. This Saturday, the WVHS Dance Team hosts their annual dance invite. Boys' Swim and Dive had their first competition last Friday and are looking forward to competing at a high level this winter season. Cheerleading is looking forward to competing in their first competition of the season as they make their way to Lincoln Way East High School. Girls' Bowling competed in a large invitation over this last weekend, and last Thursday, they won their DVC Conference Opener against Naperville Central. The winter season is off to a great start, and we look forward to watching all of our Warrior athletes shine. Moving on to academics, we move into the course request season that will build next year's staffing and scheduling for all students. At Wobonzi, over the next two months, all of our students will have a one-on-one visit with their counselor. At this meeting, they will discuss four-year planning, course progression, academic performance, and next year's course selections. Wobonzi is one of the only schools in the area to have meetings like this with every student. We will welcome our class of 2028 on January 17th for our open house. That's all for the Wobonzi Valley Board Report. Thank you, and as always, go Warriors!
Thank you very much. It is now time for public comment, and 60 minutes is allowed. Each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents. So we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. Tonight, we have one speaker. It's Alicia Smith.
Hello. My name is Alicia Smith. I grew up across from what is now Gambert Elementary School and attended Gregory Middle School and Wobonzi Valley High School. About 11 years ago, I bought a house around the corner from my parents, and then my sister and her husband moved in, and they had three kids, which now attend Gambert Elementary. I also taught for seven years at Kendall Elementary School, third grade, and six years at Georgetown Elementary School, and now I am a math specialist in 203. And I'm here to speak about... You had a teacher that comes to speak to the board about math, a Georgetown PA and accelerated math teacher. And I'm here to implore you to listen to your teachers. If you notice, many teachers don't come to speak at school board meetings, so the fact that he came means that he felt that was important, that you had something to share. He works at Georgetown, the most marginalized elementary school in our district, and he's saying that the Eureka Math Program is not doing right by the most marginalized students in our district. Those students at Georgetown are the canary in the coal mine. If it is not working for them, it's showing that the rest of the mine is not effective as well. The Eureka Math curriculum was picked by one administrator over 10 years ago. It was not vetted, it was not piloted, and the next year, that administrator was no longer working in District 204. Teachers never got manuals for their curriculum. It has now been 10 years, and they are still using the same math curriculum at the elementary level. I get homework from my nieces and nephews that is the same homework that I assigned when I used to work in 204, which to me is embarrassing. The trend of not getting manuals continues because last year, 203 and 204 adopted the same social studies curriculum, and the teachers in 204 also did not get manuals, whereas the teachers in 203 did. When a 204 teacher complained about this, they were told that the manual was online. Well, if you know anything about technology and teaching today, you need to use your laptop or your device to project the slides and the parts of the lesson. So if your manual's online, you can't really look at it in order to teach. I would implore you to listen to your teachers, and when they're coming to you with issues that are affecting the students in the classroom, that you would take that into consideration. The Eureka Math also has no digital assessments, but yet IAR and your iReady diagnostic are all digital math assessments. That means students need to learn how it's different taking paper and pencil tests than digital tests. How are they going to do that with the curriculum where all they're doing is paper and pencil, and there's no digital online assessments? So, please listen to your teachers because we have experience with how this all actually trickles down to the classroom, and he's informing you, and you should listen to him. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education, Indian Prairie Community. On Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of last week, three great traditions continued with the Crystal Concert at Nikwa, the Collage Concert at Matia, and the Prism Concert at Wobonzi. I was able to attend all three, and I can say each concert was a glorious event. There was a splendiferous arrangement of music, song, and movement that carried the audience at each concert on a wonderful journey. I know I left each concert humming some of the songs that I heard. These events bring the whole community together. Creating these events are not easy. I want to thank all of the staff at the schools who were involved. I also want to thank all the students. You have those who were performing, and you have those stagehands, video and lighting people who made it all seem easy, but it wasn't. Additionally, thanks to IPF for supporting these events. Well done. Bravo. Information was sent Wednesday to our community about our strategic plan annual report. This is the first annual report about the first year of our strategic plan. You'll be able to see how we did last year with reaching our goals and that there are parts of the strategic plan that we did not reach, but that's okay. All goals were not met, and that's appropriate because it's a five-year plan. Some goals were met, some are in progress, and some have not even been started. Now that we have the template for our annual report, we'll be able to produce the document sooner next year. Please read and review where we are with our plan. Additionally, on Wednesday, we shared with you how you can review the facilities plan and understand how your school may be impacted by the future work of the facility study. You have the ability to review the documents, and if necessary, send questions or suggestions about the plan. At the December 18th Board of Ed Meeting, the board will vote to receive the plan. And I'll turn it back to you, Ms. Donahue.
Thank you. So now I need a motion and approval of consent agenda items D through G.
I move that the board approve consent agenda items D through G as presented.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Fostick?
Yes.
Ms. Gents?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
And Ms. Demming?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion and a second to approve the 2023 tax levy resolution and the resolution adopting working cash fund tax as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2024 tax levy resolution and the resolution adopting working cash fund tax as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Quick question. Is that 2024 or 2023?
2024.
2023.
It's 2023.
2023.
It is.
It's the 2023 tax levy that is for collection.
Then I meant to be 2023. Man, you said if people wanted to see our discussion on this, we discussed this at the November 6th meeting, correct?
Correct. The tax levy's not changed from what was presented on November 6th. And as mentioned, we've discussed the tax levy and the tax process through several other budget presentations throughout the year as well.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Gents?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
And Ms. Fostick?
Yes.
The motion passes. We will now have our presentation from Dr. Rafael Segaro and Tracy Weigl regarding English Language Learning Program.
We're booing. That's what you're ruining. I usually sit on that side. Thank you for having us, distinguished members of the board, Madam Pressett, and Dr. Tally. We are here to give you an update on the ELL program and, well, some of the things that you'll see that have changed a little bit since we met you last year. So these are some of the points that we are going to review today. We're going to look at a little comparison about the past and present. We're going to discuss how we are working with our newcomer students. We are also going to talk about supporting our community, our access course, the SEAL by Literacy, some of the things we're doing with our teachers, and where we're at. So a little terminology for you. You're going to see some terminology within our presentation that usually has people wondering, you know, what does that letter mean and what does that mean? So we ensure to throw some terminology there for you so that you can be aware of what it is we're talking about. All right, overall, the English Language Learning Program is an umbrella under which we have English as a Second Language and bilingual education. In this particular case, in our district, we address our transitional bilingual students and our developmental bilingual program, which is at Georgetown on the bilingual end side. We do not have a dual-language program. On the left side, you can see every school receives ESL. All schools, as I mentioned, receive English as a Second Language. And on the right-hand side of this slide, you can see that we now have 19 schools that qualify for transitional bilingual education. The schools that you see marked in red are the schools that actually are new to the list from last year. So some of these schools have actually not only added a language such as Russian, Spanish, but, for example, one that is not highly... White Eagle, yesterday, just yesterday, also qualified as a Telugu center for bilingual students. In terms of our languages in the district, the population in our language shifts up and down in terms of languages, and that has a lot to do with how our families choose to code their kids when they're in the district. Sometimes, for one reason or another, parents, when their kids exit the English Language Learning Program, they may feel as if they don't want that designation of another language in their house because they may feel as if they may be targeted, or they may feel as a minority, so they request that that is removed and that English language is there. Therefore, you see a trend. However, we've had as low as 95 one year and 130 the following year. This trend is really not very well explicable as we don't know what the families tend to write in their report when they register their students. However, the alarming trend that you can see here is that our numbers continue to rise. This is particularly... particularly alarming when you see that we are almost at 4,000 students and that I guarantee you that by the end of the school year, we will be over 4,000 students that are English Language Learners. Just to give you a point of view, last year, when we finished the school year, those numbers that are in the middle row reflect what our numbers were last year in December when I presented to you. When we finished the year last year, we were at 3,593, and at the beginning of August, I'm sorry, at the end of August, beginning of the school year, we were at 3,706 students, and within two months, we are already at 3,963. Just last month, just this month of November, we had a whopping total of 104 extra students in the English Language Learners Program. Tracy came in my office and asked me, "How many students do you think we went up?" And I said, "Oh, about 46." She's like, "Nah, double that," and I'm like, "Ooh." So, yeah, it's a little concerning because we are trying to provide the best support possible for our students, and oftentimes, we are constrained by the number of staff we prepared for this school year. If we go to the next slide, you can see how our district has drastically increased in our EL population and decreased in our district population, and this is since I've been here. And that, actually, it says there 2005, 2006. But the district was sitting somewhere around 33,500 students, and the population back then was only 850 students. Right now, as our population in the district has decreased to 26,032 students, our EL population is 3,963. Where does that leave us? As you can see here, the percent of EL population in the district has skyrocketed from 2.5% to 15.2% of the district. In terms of staff, every year, it seems as if we are asking for one or two more teachers. Around, I would say, March, I'll go to my supervisor and I say, "Based on our projections, based on where we're at, I think I'm gonna need five more teachers," or "I may need two teachers at this level, another teacher here." But it's always been about five or six staff members. As you can see here, it's well over that. Most of these staff that has increased have been through teacher assistants because as our buildings turn into a bilingual building, then we may not have the bilingual... services to those students. Therefore, we try to hire teacher assistants from within the community as people that may be able to speak that language and then provide the support in that language to the students.
All right, good evening. This slide here shows a comparison over the past three years of the top 10 languages spoken across 204 not specific to ELL. And you will notice that the first six languages remain consistent across the three years of comparison. Spanish, Telugu, Hindi, Tamil, Urdu, and Mandarin being our top consistent six. And then the bottom four tend to switch around from year to year. So as you can see, our current year, in seventh, we have Russian, followed by Gujarati, Arabic, and Marathi. In terms of our top ELL languages in the district, you will see on the right-hand side, these are specific to this school year with Spanish in first with 992. You can see the list that we have, but what we really wanted to draw attention to is our third-largest language right now is Russian with 328, whereas last year, this language was in seventh with 126. So we wanted to highlight the growing population of our Russian... This is a chart that can show you apples to apples with all the top 10 languages. So you can see from last year is in blue, this year is in gold, and you can see how they compare. So it's just kind of a nice visual to look at how our languages compare from one year to the next. So again, these are our top 10 EL languages.
One thing I'd like to point out is that the last language of Ukrainian is very, very similar. Most students that arrive here from there are also Russian speakers to a degree. So that trend of that population, as well as another one we're seeing grow is Uzbek, which is also within the same trend.
And not only that, Uzbek, we have students coming from Kyrgyzstan, Kazakhstan, pretty much that whole section, all of them speaking Russian, which they have that in common, but many of those countries, we're starting to see larger representations of students from the former Soviet Union, particularly that southeastern part.
Okay, we're going to shift a little bit to give you an idea of something that we have had a tremendous need to address. Our newcomer population. What are newcomers? Newcomers are students that are new to the country that have zero or very, very, very little English. And our staff, not only our students, but mainly our students. And our staff, not only our students, but mainly our staff, are feeling the grunt of the large influx of newcomers into our district. Some teachers have a concern because they might have not dealt with this before. So, and we're talking regular classroom teachers, I'm not talking EL teachers, I'm talking regular classroom teachers who have a concern. "How do I deal with this?" And so, we have created a newcomer committee in which we're focusing in the three areas that you can see there. The first one is community, second one is professional development, and the third one is curriculum and instruction. We created a committee team that, as you can see, is very well-versed in terms of all of the components of people that may be able to put in two cents from a different lens to our committee and to our work. We are meeting three times this year. The first one, we've already done, which was on October twenty-sixth. We plan a meeting again coming up in a couple of weeks on the nineteenth, and then one more time in March. Amongst the things that we have discussed during our work have been the professional work this past year that we have done. Last year, I sent two teams to do some professional development and to prepare what is really the skeleton of what we're working with right now. We have collected a lot of data. We have began to look at the social and emotional needs that our staff, our students, and our families are going through. We are providing the support for families and students outside of school, which we will discuss shortly, and we are clearly within the committee. Part of our big work in the curricular side is what are the considerations we need to take for the population of students and what appropriate materials and resources can we use to help them succeed?
As you know, this year, we have two parent coordinators for immigrant families that are now part of our ELL team, and their names are Maria Arias Carzon and Angie Nieto, and they are working with primarily resources, they're working as resources for our parent community. And based on the first two months of the school year, the data that we have so far is they've had eighty-nine referrals, and what that means is either ELL teachers or school staff members have referred particularly families to our coordinators for support, and then our coordinators reach out to those families to see how they can assist them. We've had seventy hours of parent contact time. The Language Line has been used sixty-plus times. Our coordinators are conducting home visits. They have connected over thirty-one families to outside community resources. They have conducted five presentations to families in the evenings based on their needs, and there is some cross-work that has been done with PDAC as well. So, our parent coordinators are providing a variety of resources to our families, and we have gotten a lot of positive feedback from our school communities regarding their assistance.
Please keep in mind that this were the first two months.
Yes.
They have clearly done a lot in November as well, which is not included in there as this is just a very recent information. However, in some of the slides you will see coming forward, there is an extra update on that.
Yes, so as we mentioned, one of the great tools that we have this year is the Language Line, which allows our staff members immediate access to talk to personnel and have translations for families in real time on the spot, which has been amazing. We have for you the top five rankings of those Language Line calls. As you can see, Russian has had almost three thousand minutes, which is a hundred and eighty-nine calls in the data that we've collected so far, followed by Spanish with nine-hundred-and-seventy-six minutes and ninety-two calls. Ukrainian comes next with two-hundred-and-one minutes and eighteen calls, then Mandarin, one-hundred-and-ninety-six with fourteen, and finally Uzbek, we have a hundred and sixteen minutes with seventeen calls. You can see, we have a total of twenty languages that have been accessed through our Language Line, but we're focusing on the top five for you to see kind of what the prevalence is in terms of the Language Line use.
Once again, this was September and October.
Right.
In November, we just yesterday, or, yeah, last night, I received the last report, which I provided to Dr. Tally to share with you.
And this was particularly helpful for November parent-teacher conferences, which allowed our parents access to native language support during their conferences with teachers.
So, some of the work that our parent coordinators have done with our immigrant families is depicted in this chart, and as you can see, the wide range of work that they have done, whether it's parents, helping parents navigate through ParentView, school-parent linkage, which on the next slide, we'll provide a picture of that large piece of the pie that's there. Outside resources will be another pie that will provide you a good idea of what those resources are, and then some of the other intricacies that happen through education. So, this piece of pie, it revolves around, I'm colorblind, but I think that's red.
Yeah.
That red large piece there. And so, from that large red piece of the previous pie, you can see through the school and parent linkage that our community coordinators have done, these are the referrals that they have received. And through the outside sources, which was the other piece of the pie that was a little larger, you can see all of the outside community resources that they are doing. The VNA, Visiting Nurses Association, really relates to healthcare facilities that help families for low income or that don't have access to insurance or qualify for insurance. So, that's a huge help for some of those community members that are arriving here brand-new and need those type of resources. World Relief is something that we have hooked up with this year. Of course, we offer our free ESL classes for families throughout the year. We offer a course every semester and in the summer, and those are in conjunction with College of DuPage, so they're free for our families. And we provide a homework club on the side if parents can't come because they don't have somebody to watch their kid. We bring them over.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and discuss our 2023 Access Scores. As you may remember from the past, the Access for ELLs is an annual high-stakes assessment used to gauge English language proficiency on a yearly basis. The State of Illinois tests in March, well, actually, I apologize, January through March, that's the window, and the State of Illinois has determined that a four-point-eight out of six overall score is what students must obtain in order to exit the ELL program. So, this is the measure that we use as a district to determine if a student stays in the ELL program or if they exit. This is an overview of how our students did last year on the 2023 Access. You will see at the elementary level, we had four-hundred-and-twenty students exit, which amounts to eighteen percent. You will see that last year, we had twenty percent exit. So, we did drop two percent for our elementary level, even though the number of students is higher. It's because, obviously, we have more students this past year. At the middle school, thirty-eight students exited, which is seven-point-two percent of our English learners. Last year, that number was eight percent, so there was a slight decline there as well. And then, if you look at our high school numbers, we had twenty-eight students exit, which is ten-point-four percent, which is a four-tenths of a point increase compared to last year at just ten percent. So, our district totals, we had four-hundred-and-eighty-six students exit the ELL program, which is fifteen-point-five percent. Last year, we had seventeen-point-five percent exit. So, as you can see, we have dropped two percent as a district for our access testing. Just to point out, the state exit rate is five-point-eight percent, so we are still just about ten percent above the state average, and the state average also dropped a little bit from six-point-one to five-point-eight. So, as you can see, there's kind of been a decline over the past three years. Of course, as we've mentioned, a great deal of this can be attributed to the fact that we have many more newcomer students that have entered our district, many students coming in with very limited, if not any, language skills at all. So, these are students that are taking our access test, and so that is definitely a large part of why our numbers have been continuing to decrease, tends to be that our students that have, we have students with greater needs.
But please notice that we are exiting more students every year. It's just that we have so many more students that the percent decreases because when you're comparing those two, it just doesn't correlate appropriately. I wanna give you a quick update on the SEAL of Bilingual Literacy. This past year was our eighth year of implementation, and we exited a hundred and thirty-seven, well, we didn't, we gave, a hundred and thirty-seven students earned the SEAL of Bilingual Literacy, and sixty-seven students earned the commendation. Compared to the previous year, where seventy-eight students had earned a SEAL and forty-four had earned a commendation, that's a nice increase there. One thing that I discussed with my colleague today for the high school was that all students that are Level Three at the high school now are being given the opportunity to take the SEAL of Bilingual Literacy test through their coursework, and it's included in their school fees, and they can take it at any language. So, that is also helping the process of get students the opportunity to be, to receive the SEAL of Bilingual Literacy. Those are the fifty languages included in SEAL of Bilingual Literacy testing that we do. If we get a student or a parent that reaches out and says, "Oh, we come from this country where we speak this language and we don't see that there, is there a possibility that you could provide us the opportunity for the SEAL?" We try to accommodate them as best possible. We do have a second company that we reach out to, that we use their services for other languages that are not listed here, and they are more than happy to test the kids, and we, but we have to set up that process for them because it's mainly, two parts of the test are gonna be done through an interview process on the phone.
And then, in the past three years, we have continued, as an ELL team, to offer book studies for our English, for our ELL teachers in order to increase their toolbox of strategies and give them more ideas on how to work with our students effectively. This year, due to the influx of newcomers, we are using a book titled "A Guide to Welcoming and Engaging Newcomers," and we have chosen that. We have a full house of teachers participating in this book study. Our teachers are eager to help our newcomer population, and they are seeking these opportunities and taking advantage of these opportunities in order to better address the needs of our newcomers in our schools, and we're just trying to stay current with our district demands.
The last slide we have for you before we take questions is a slide that we felt provides you a general picture of the reality of where we're at in our department. We've had five-hundred-and-six students this year, and this is updated as of Monday, not today, it's Monday, as of last Thursday, yeah, last Thursday. Five-hundred-and-six students registered in our district, our first-year students to the US, and they are in, that are in two-oh-four. Two-hundred-and-forty-four of those are pre-kindergarten and kindergarten students. I'll take that a step further. Three-hundred-and-seventy-five of those students are elementary students. Fifty-eight are middle schoolers and forty-nine are high schoolers. Out of the three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-three, I said, right? Two-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-three of those students are actually born here in the United States. And you would ask yourself, "How can that be?" Well, the reality is that we get a lot of immigrants that begin their families here in this country, and they raise their kids speaking their native language. Yes, those kids may pick up that sanguine, that, that social English in the playground with kids and so on, but it's, that's what it is, it's social language, it's not academic language. And so, once they come into the schools and register and fill out the home language survey, and we find out that there is that second language in the home, then we must screen them, and they are not necessarily passing that screener. So, that is a trend that truly speaks for the entire country. This is not something that is particular to our district or to Illinois. Clearly, the balance of that, one-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty of those students were our students in our district that actually came or were born somewhere else other than this country. Two-thousand-and-thirty-two English learners currently are in bilingual programs in our district now. We have to be cautious with that number because of the fact that clearly, we have ELLs in every school, but not every school qualifies for bilingual education because not every school has the twenty or more of that language. Could we have more students receive bilingual services? Absolutely. If by law, we must provide it, but we do not if they don't meet that necessary criteria. Eight-hundred-and-ninety-six of our English Language Learners are Level One. I'll repeat that, eight-hundred-and-ninety-six of our English Language Learners are Level One, and five-hundred-and-fifty-four are Level Two. You add those two numbers together, you'll see that a minimum one-third of our population of English Language Learners in this district are at the bare minimum of what they need to know in English, which is not much. We are currently running some cohorts through the district to help our teachers in the district gain that crossing our fingers, that certification, so that they can help within the district, so that when we send an EL student to a particular class that is not an EL class and that teacher is certified, that teacher does know how to use those particular strategies to help those students.
And I just wanted to point out that this past year, we just, we're almost finishing up, next semester, we'll be finishing up our seventh and eighth cohorts through District two-oh-four with the University of St. Francis, and this past year, we had actually, we're running two cohorts because of the growing need and demand that our teachers wanna take the ESL endorsement classes because they're seeing the need trickle into their classrooms. So, we will be starting more cohorts at the beginning of next school year, and I'm thinking that we might see even more of a demand for it. So, that's really exciting news on our behalf, and Rafael and I, we have recruited several teachers out of our cohorts that are now part of our ELL team, which is great because, you know, we've gotten to know them, and we know that they have the skill set that we're looking for.
The last bullet point there, it's really what this presentation comes down to. Why is all this information so vital and so important to you, our dear board members? Well, I have to be honest and tell you that it is extremely important for you to be aware of our increase of our increase in population and how that relates to our staffing. I find myself coming back often. And when I say often, I mean often enough. Every other month, I have to go to my supervisor and say, I need another teacher. This wasn't in the projections. Or I need more teacher assistant. But we don't have the money to get another teacher out of the blue. And I try to support as much as I can out of all our federal and state grants with this. But then I have to go to Matt and say, or go to Louis and say, Louis, you need to talk to Dr. Tally, or you need to talk to Matt to see how we're going to be able to, to do this. Because in, at the end of the day, our students are suffering if they're not receiving the equitable support that we see across the district, perhaps in some other programs. And that is not to say that they're not receiving the best because our teachers are the best. I am so proud of the work that our EL team does. They work hand and foot with our students. I tend to have about, what I call it, fifty, a ratio of fifty students per teacher. Now, think about that for a second. Because if you see a classroom in this district that has fifty students in one classroom, you're not going to see that. But our EL teachers are working with fifty students on a daily basis, okay? Across the day to help them gain the necessary English skill so that they can be successful in the general classroom. And I have some buildings where the numbers have gone above that ratio. And we have sixty students to a teacher.
Seventy.
Seventy students to a teacher. And you would be like, what? Yeah, that's happening because we continue to get new kids. A hundred this month alone will tell you that some teacher just spent an hour and a half doing the screening, doing paperwork, so that everything can be in regulation for our students. So I think that the support that our department has received up to this point from our administration is more than commendable. But I, this trend is not changing, as you can see. Every year, I've sat in front of you and I've told you, oh, by the way, we're two hundred more than we were last year. And now we sit here and we are four hundred to five hundred more than we were last year. And by the end of the school year, we will be at, we'll be over four thousand. I, I, I come in, I promised, I promised Mr. Dubrocker that I would throw a shout out for Matia, who is, has seen such a large increase. They're sitting at over two hundred and sixty students at Matia. And they are putting everything they can into the work, and they work very hard. Our department chair there is phenomenal, she's doing a great job. But, you know, they want to provide kids the best they can possibly provide, not the minimum. Because we can't keep looking at the floor to see, oh, well, is that what the state says is the minimum? At least we're doing that. But we want to make sure that our students are successful. So this is the why. And I will clearly be looking at the projections for next year and the rest of this year to see where we go. But currently, I'm hiring more teacher assistants, so. With that, I open the floor to any questions you may have. And I don't want to stop without giving a shout out to the wonderful administrative team that have provided me so much support to this.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to the board members for questions.
So I'll go first.
Oh, let's start, sorry, thank you, I had a note about that. Victoria, do you have? No, you have no questions or comments, okay. All right, so the board, yes, I'm sorry, I have a mental block about that. All right, I'm opening it up to the board members to ask questions.
All right, I'll go first. Can you go, go to slide seven? Just so I'm clear, in two years, we've gone up a thousand students for ELS, correct? Okay, slide nine. Two thousand and six, we were sitting at two point five percent EL student population. Just to give you an idea, I looked up the numbers. The state average in two thousand and six was six point six percent students. So we were a third less than the state average, okay? Now, fast forward to twenty twenty-three, we are sitting at a fifteen point two percent of our student population. The state average is fifteen percent. So we've surpassed the state average for EL students when we were a third of it back in two thousand and six. I know, Dr. Segura, you, you focus a lot on the staffing. And, and that's just for the school, or for the students that have, the EL students during the day. You know, you also focused on eighteen, slide eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, which were the things and the resources that we provide for those families outside of the normal school day. My concern here is, in two years, with a thousand more students for EL than we had two years ago, how much more resources this is taking us? And now we're more than the state average. You know, I, I know as a board and as a district, we have focused a lot of resources, most recently on, on our Title I students, and that's about nineteen percent of our students. You know, we always focus on our special needs students, which is twelve percent of our students. But now, one of our biggest growing populations is our EL students. And now that's sitting at fifteen percent of our students. You know, I know we have a strategic plan, but I also think we need to, and I'm sure administration is doing this, but I think we need to consistently monitor and make sure that that caseload, you know, you said average, but that might not be the average at every building. It might be considerably higher. I, I think we need to, as best, keep track of that and try to, to the best of our ability, make sure that those students have the staffing available. Because if we're not doing that and not doing our best to do that, we're doing a disservice to those students. So I am very open at next year's presentation that you give us that you say, hey, listen, we needed this, many staff, additional staff members. We could only get this, either because of budget or because the availability of those teachers. But, you know, I, I think, again, I know we have a strategic plan, but I also think we need to focus where we need to focus our efforts. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
And Mark, just, just to rebuttal on that real quick. Our percentage of students over the past couple of years was about ten percent. That, that additional five percent came like that.
Yeah.
I'll just, let me just add just a few. You are exactly right with regards to resources not being infinite.
Well, and I know we said eighty percent of funding, yes.
However, with that said, and one of the things that was mentioned is the fact of having teachers who have the knowledge to work with EL students. Because you, you're not working with children in isolation. There are times, yes, you are doing some pull out, you're doing some plug in. You are doing all of that and more. And so, our EL teachers are doing some things with EL students, but then the classroom teacher is also doing things with EL students. And so, it's, it is a mix that you're going to have happen. And for the students to really learn requires a strong mix of learning, of teaching happening from the classroom teacher to the EL teacher. And so, unfortunately, to become a certified teacher or a licensed teacher, depending on which language you want to use, you do not have to have a class in EL. However, more and more of our teachers are gaining that luckily through what we offer. And so, again, it is that mix that has to happen for the learning to take place.
And I just thought of one more comment. If slide twenty-two, or the exit, the exit numbers. I know I had asked a question previously, and thank you for, you know, giving me the answer to that. I was concerned to see those exit numbers go down. But then, when I started doing the math too, again, when you add in a thousand students over the past two years, and your numbers are relatively the same, that means we are keeping equal with our exit rates or actually even getting a little better. And then, when you look to the state average, and we're at triple some of those exit rates to the state average, I give our, our teachers and our staff a lot of kudos for, for maintaining the exit levels that they are. They're not ideal, I'm sure, but triple the state average ain't too bad either.
Yeah, and just as an aside, the WEDA consortium is currently working on increasing. There's going to be a new access test released in the next year or two. And the idea is that the rigor is going to be increased on our next test to better align with our newest English language development standards. So we're planning on seeing that happen. So with that, we're also expecting a little bit of a bump because when the rigor increases, we usually tend to see a little bit of a drop. And that's going to happen with everybody. But I just wanted to throw that out there so that when that does happen, or if that does happen, we're anticipating it.
So can I make another request then for next year, if that happens? When you give us the next update? Is let us know how that affect the exit rates clearly? Because we went through that with proficiency. Back to, you know, ten, twelve years ago, where they kept changing the metrics and the, and the goalposts proficiency. When we were at eighty, ninety percent proficiency, and now we're at fifty. Our kids aren't performing worse than they are, they just changed how proficiency was measured. So now, that's the same thing they're going to do here. It's going to make us look worse as a district. But that's not reality, they just changed the, the goalposts.
Right.
Correct. Not, seven years ago, the state, and this was through Park. The state changed the skills scores and made it more rigorous for students to attain a higher number. What happened was that WEDA followed suit in the state of Illinois to ensure that then the access test was commensurate to what the state was doing with the general assessment. And that dropped the numbers down. So then, WEDA had to retract back. And in the past, to exit students, you needed not only a four point eight to exit, but you also needed, yeah, well, at one point, it was five. Then it dropped to four point eight with a literacy score, combination of your reading and your writing, of four point two. And when they realized that, wow, all of a sudden, the state dropped. By the way, not Indian Prairie, but the state dropped. And in numbers, they said, we need to make an adjustment. They took the literacy score out, now it's an overall four point eight. Will that change? It's possible. The test, that new test is not really coming for this school year. So the numbers won't reflect that next year, Mr. Rising, because they're taking this current year's test. But it may for the following.
And just as an example, Maryland's exit is a four point five. So as you can see, Illinois, four point eight, Maryland, four point five. So it's much harder to get out from here than it is in Maryland.
Well, and that's just the score, who knows what the rigor's like?
It's the same test.
Always the same test.
It's the national, it's sort of the national test.
Yeah, and some, some states are as low as four point two with their exit rate.
And there are other states that are five point oh.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
I am really excited to see what you're doing with this challenge. Because that's what this is, a challenge for your whole team and all of the teachers in our district, really. I'm particularly excited to see the language lines and the parent coordinators. Are, do we have plans to grow that parent coordinator program? I know with the, the construct, right, of the budget that we got going on.
Well.
Josh is like, no, no.
No, just.
We would love to grow such a program, but we are finite staff and finite budget.
You are a finite staff.
And so, therefore, this, the answer right now is no.
No.
And, and just a little further piece of information. Our two family and coordinators for immigrant families, they're paid through a federal grant.
Okay.
That we got extra immigration grant where I found the funds. To, and then the district was very gracious to support me doing that, to bring those two staff members on board. But that's, I don't know whether I'll get that money. Then what do we do? So we'll, we'll keep fighting for it.
All right, good information to have, thank you. I did have one other question. You said that all level three students at the high school level are given the opportunity to take the Seal of Bilinguality exam. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Correct, and they do it during class.
So that's true of even students who are native English speakers?
If they are in a level three class. And a rural language course, yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
This presentation was so informative and helped me understand really what you all are, the changing demographics of our district. I think what makes this so challenging is the unpredictability of it. Can you, can you explain why there would be an enrollment of a hundred more EL students in the month of November? Like, are these students that just came to the district? Or are these students who were just recently identified as EL students? How does that work?
New students to the district.
New students to the district. And are, are... Is there specific languages or specific areas where, where these students are coming from?
There's a large Russian predominance. We see, we see all languages, but if there were to be a majority. I have a large, I do a lot of the enrollments, and there's definitely a lot of Russian students coming in. Examples like White Eagle Elementary School is one of the schools. It's, it's constant, it's constant. They have maybe.
I'm officially understaffed at White Eagle.
Yeah, like every week, it's like four or five new students enrolling. Matia Valley is another one. We're just seeing especially, there's particular buildings where there's a lot of move-ins, and it's constant. If you, we, we pull monthly numbers, and we look at the monthly, you know, our schools, and we look at their population on a monthly basis. And we'll be like, wow, Matia added ten new students this month. White Eagle added eight new students this month. And it's just, and then there's some that have very steady populations where it's like, they started with forty-one, and right now, they have forty-one. They might get one, they lose one. But we tend to see that there's some buildings that just are showing a lot more growth than others. And there's a lot of Russian students or students from that area of the country, of the world.
Still, Middle School is another one.
Yes, is another one. The housing availability.
Well, taking consideration that students that go from White Eagle go to Still.
Right.
So two years ago, I had point six staffing at Still. And the other point four of that staff member, she traveled and supported other buildings. Right now, I'm sitting at two full-time EL teachers plus two Russian teaching assistants. And they have sixty-three, or at least three weeks ago, they had sixty-three Russian students in that school alone.
White Eagle currently has ninety level one Russian speakers. Or not ninety, they're not all Russian, but they currently have ninety level one students at White Eagle.
Of which a large of that population.
Is Russian, very large.
to focus on social emotional support for our, our teachers and our staff because of the potential burnout in just trying to address new things and establish a system which is new that can take a lot more energy.
Yes. And our teachers are doing a phenomenal job, not just addressing the needs of our students, but jumping in with the families. And there's a lot of work that they do above and beyond what a teacher just does with the work of our fam, with the work of our, for our families. And we have an amazing staff and they've just kind of taken it upon themselves to do this. And, yeah, we're very proud to be part of such an amazing team.
If I take you back to what I said earlier, towards the beginning of the presentation, as of yesterday, we, White Eagle is now officially not only a Russian bilingual building, but a Telugu bilingual building. That's two languages that are not even the norm to find certified teachers in Illinois.
Right.
I can find Spanish teachers. I guarantee you I will find Spanish teachers. I'll find Spanish speaking TAs. When I need to find Telugu teaching assistants or Russian teaching assistants, I'm truly tapping into our community.
Yep.
Put the posting out hoping that our community, our parents that maybe our stay home moms come with a degree, a great degree from, from India, from Russia. One of the, one of the teacher assistants I hired from Russia was a journalist, for example, you know, just to give you the wide range of, our teacher assistants are so overqualified, I'm telling you, because they come with all these degrees from all these countries. It's amazing. And the best that you can do for them with that wonderful degree at the moment is a teaching assistant position. Would I love for them to take the necessary courses to be certified as a teacher, we snap them in a minute. But that comes with a cost too, you know, for them.
And last question, so the, with the parent coordinators, that came from federal funding and that was for this year, for this academic year? The funding was support the coordinators?
I'm 100% positive I get that grant through.
Okay.
For next year.
Okay.
I hired him, I got that grant late in the year last year and I allocated the funds so we're covered this year and I know that we'll get it this year. If we don't, I'm calling the state. You all call in the state. But, yeah, because our immigrant population has grown, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Slide four. I just had, just ask for a little bit of clarification, please. The.
Yes.
On the right-hand side, can you share transitional bilingual versus developmental bilingual, please?
Absolutely. So developmental bilingual, we only do it at Georgetown. It's a form of dual language, okay? It's an immersion program. The difference in dual language programs are twofold. Let's look to the right side first. A general dual language program is instruction that is offered to students in two separate languages. The target language, which you choose the dual language to be in. Let's pick Spanish, because in this case, it is Spanish, okay? The other language is English, which is the main language from the country, okay? So now, from that, you have what's called a one-way program or a two-way program. In a one-way program, all of your student population within that classroom is of the target language, which is what we have at Georgetown. We call it a developmental bilingual program. It is a one-way immersion, one-way dual language program, okay? So our classrooms at Georgetown are of Hispanic students, all of them are qualified, at one point qualified. Some were along the line from the time they started in kindergarten through fifth grade, they might have exited EL through access, most likely around third grade, okay? But they stay in the program through fifth grade because we, the goal of it is to ensure that the students are bicultural, bilateral, biliterate, and bilingual. So we want to ensure that our students are completely bilingual students so that when they graduate, they have more opportunities out in the world. A transitional bilingual program, by its title itself, it's what it is. You transition students from their native language to the English language, leaving behind their native language. It's the, I would venture to say, nobody will come after me, but it is the worst type of bilingual program there is. Because you're taking the nativ, the nativeness of a student and you're leaving that behind. Oftentimes, those kids go home at four, five, fifth grade and the parents talk to them in their native language and they respond back in what? In English. And they choose not to continue responding until they lose it. And if you don't use it, you lose it. So a dual language program truly is the best form of bilingual education there is. So at Georgetown, we used to have what was called an 80-20 program where you start in kindergarten, 80% of the instruction was in the target language, 20% in English, first grade, same, then second grade, 70% Spanish, 30 English, fourth, third grade, 60% Spanish, 40 English. And when you got to fifth, uh, fourth grade, 50/50 and it stayed 50/50, okay? We switched that to a 50/50 program last year. So they receive half of their instruction in English, half of their instruction in Spanish. And that's currently where they're at. Transitional bilingual program is either instruction in their native language and/or support in their native language, depending on the type of support you have at the school. Our transitional bilingual program for Telugu and Russian really is not teaching them in Russian or Telugu because we don't have an instructor that is certified in Telugu or Russian. But we have a lot of teacher assistants that provide that native language support for them so that they can learn and assimilate to the English language and the school system so that they can be successful. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. I just wondered, as I look at slides 18, 19, where we talked about the parent coordinators and the immigrant family support they provide and using so much of the community to tap into on some of those, do we see, and I'm not sure if you know, but do we see much language support in their particular language from the community? So, does that, does that make sense, that question?
It's making, it makes, what you're saying makes total sense. Let me see if I can portray it for you in a way that will make sense. Because I can't guarantee you that these are all the outside community resources. I can't guarantee you that all of these community resources have those languages or those particular languages. However, they may have the language line to help support them, okay? But they may have some of these things. The most important piece, World Relief offers translators at no cost to the families and interpreters. The difference, translation is on paper, interpreting is voice to voice. So even though we were thinking, oh, can you send me a translator? I got, no, I'm not, I'm sending you an interpreter, I'm not sending you a translator. So World Relief offers this type of services. Where do they tap into to get those services? I don't know. But they do at no cost. Clearly, the ESL classes are instructors from COD that are English speakers teaching ESL. But other than that, I can't tell you, honestly speaking, whether they provide those services outside of this. I know inside of the district, if we go to the previous slide, this one, that based on the staffing that I've been able to secure, I reach out to them and I say, I need your help. For example, we have a B-PAC meeting on the 14th, next Thursday, right here, okay? I will be, bilingual parent advisory council meeting, which I run, will provide information about the upcoming access test for parents. I will give them samples of the test, I will explain all of the regulations as to why they have to take that test. So I contact Mr. Oviedo, who is one of our teacher assistants at Fisher, and I contact Mrs. Lusar, who is our teacher, now, now our home and school liaison at White Eagle. They come, they are present. I have this translating system, I give it to them with headphones, whatever, I stand up here and talk to them, all sitting here, like this wonderful group of people we have here. Some of them have the headphones and whatever I say, they're, they're interpreting so that they can understand what's going on at the meeting. First time I got those things, I did it backwards. It was mainly Hispanic community for us, and so I decided to do the meeting in Spanish. And then they translated in English. Because sometimes it may be healthy for you to see what that feels like when your shoe, when the shoe is on the other side.
Sure.
You know, what is it that they're going through? So I did the meeting in Spanish and the parents received everything in English.
Thanks, that's great. I appreciate that, that's.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's always very interesting presentation. It's clear the volume of students that we're supporting has grown dramatically. I actually, in the last couple of times I substitute taught, I had one student who had just gotten here, Hispanic, Spanish speaking, and another one last week that was Ukrainian. And I was just like overwhelmed thinking about what these students have to deal with coming into the school environment and that, knowing, you know, which end is up and not understanding what anybody is saying to them. So I was relieved to see often they were getting pulled out and the support that was given to them, but I had no idea that the volume had grown so dramatically. But, you know, just a personal experience myself recently. I'm also very happy you have this newcomer focus. I think that's really important for the teachers, the students, the families, and just all the sorts of issues that come up with being new to the country. It's, it struck me thinking about this, it's like, do all of these students take the IAR and I-RUDY test, no matter what level they are? Like if they're level one or two, they still take those tests?
And the special education students that have higher needs take an access test that is called the alternate access test. There's, they can never exit out of the alternate access test, but we must give it to them.
So recent.
It only gets to a certain level.
Yeah. Recently, we got our school ratings for the state, so it's like 15% of our students are English lang, I'm going to Mr. Rising's proficiency thing, 15% are English language learners and a third of them are level one or two coming into our district, like brand new to the language, basically. And if they come in right around when that testing is happening, it's.
It's a challenge.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Mr. Sprandl provided me some information a couple of years ago of where our EL population students ranked among the general tests. And he said that, believe it or not, the largest growth per percentage was EL students.
I believe, I mean, I believe they're up for the challenge, I believe the teachers are too, but it's just if you have to take those tests, then that's where you're at because that's, you just came here or whatever. I worry that it affects the ratings of our schools and, you know, I don't want to be somebody that counts on that, but it's like that affects our property values, it affects our, you know, why people want to move here or whatever. They look at those numbers and they don't look underneath it to say, hey, they have a huge population of English language learners that, you know, are contributing to the testing, so.
Just, just to talk about that just for a quick moment, under another accountability measure, several years ago, EL students who were new to the country or knew they were allowed to skip testing their first year.
Oh.
That is no longer in place. Because think about it, if you were given an assessment in Russian, Spanish, Urdu, you may be brilliant, but the first time you're seeing it, you won't be able to do well on it. So as I said, there used to be, that used to be part of the process, but no longer do they allow that you to have one year of grace of not having to take the assessment.
Oh, thank you for that. Yeah, I mean, it does put it in perspective if you think about sitting in front of your computer suddenly and you're given a test in Russian. It's like maybe math problems, you can quickly figure out what the word add or subtract or whatever the math problem is, but reading a story and answering questions about it or whatever, it's, it's overwhelming to think about that. So thank you so much for everything that you're doing and helping, you know, everyone across the board with this influx of unique cultures and languages. And I was, we were at something recently, the board, and one of the school districts got up there and they're like, we have like 50 languages, or it was under 50. And our, our old district, I'm sitting there, I know we have more than 100. So they were like, you know, saying how difficult that was. And I thought, yeah, you have nothing compared to what we deal with. So, so thank you, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you for having us, it's been a pleasure.
Yes, thank you. All right. Our last thing is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. Anything anyone has? No. So I need a motion to adjourn in a second.
Motion adjourned.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.